I'm trying to give you some audio. Check, 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 check. One, two. Check one, two, three. This is an audio check for the Pembroke School Committee over. Check, check.
............
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to School Committee Meeting. I'm gonna glass as odds Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you would all rise, we're gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we do wish everyone a very happy Valentine's Day. Reminder, any questions for us, for those viewing audience at home, you can email your questions to scinfo@pembrokek twelve dot org, or again to our audience, if you want to sign the sheet on any given particular topic, you can, we'll acknowledge you and we can ask your questions there. So with that, yep, we have a guest with us, an Eagle Scout, Brendan Kanye, if you want to come up and share your project with us.
So Brendan, while you're making your way to the mic, just a reminder that the mic amplifies your voice for the folks that are coming out, for the folks in the room, so speak up as VPN. And the school committee does have a copy of the proposal that you presented.
So today I'm talking about how I'm doing my project at the high school, um, so I chose to do this project because the sports has always been a big part of my life, and I've always been up at the high school playing sports. I play football in the fall and lacrosse in spring, and I've always gone around trying to, oh, sorry.
No pressure, regroup.
Yeah, yeah, so I got asked to do the, this project because it's been a lot, the shed originally comes from the soccer field across the field, so it's about thirty years old, I believe, and so this, I got asked to do this by Columbia this fall, and so the shed, the problems with it are it's, it's old, it's outdated, and we're just trying to make it look better, and I thought it was a great idea for me, especially I've been up there all my life. And so my idea was to fix up the outside mainly, so we're gonna start by replacing the, right now it's like wood, it's all, like, old and faded, all the paint too, so we're gonna replace that with vinyl, just like how they got a new ticket booth this fall, so they're gonna make it look like that, and then we're gonna get a new door, because that door is all banged in, and then we're also gonna fix the lights, because all the people that cook, they have to cook around the corner where it's very dark, so we're gonna try to fix that for them, and then also get a new signage, because the letters are all messed up, and that's mostly the, yeah. Any questions?
Questions, Brendan?
When I look through your plan, now you've already, you already did the car wash, is that in?
So I, I've not done the car wash. So we have not done the car wash, because by the time I finished my proposal, it was already winter, so we didn't want to do it when it's like thirty degrees.
That's what I was wondering, is like, how, so do you have an alternate approach for the gray thing?
So over the fall, I created a letter that, for the boosters, talking about my project, that Mrs. Little said that she would send out to all the sports organizations that use the snack shack in the spring or in the fall. So that was that, and then we may do a car wash in the spring sometime before we start getting things going, just to help me with the money.
Great, and I appreciate all the detail that you put in that plan, you were pretty meticulous. My father was very handy, so I just, I love it when people lay out the plan and actually read, like, directions and know what tools they need. So I really feel like you've really thought this through, and I can't thank you enough for doing this for us. So, great, good luck with it.
All right.
I just wanna say thank you, so I think this is a very thorough proposal, and I appreciate that you wanna do something that's gonna really benefit all of the sports, so great job on this, and I really appreciate it, so.
Again, going with my committee members, amazing proposal, down to the detail. I saw one of our former colleagues, Jim Agnew's name on there, and a big fan of Jim's, all in favor of it, and I will tell you, I'll put a hundred dollars towards your project, okay? I promised the same thing to one of the class boys, and I said, he hasn't called me yet, so make sure you track me down. I'll put a hundred dollars toward your project, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with everyone else. I think this is an awesome proposal. I read it over the weekend, and we got it, and I was really impressed, and I want to thank you for taking on this project as well. And, all right, I'll, I'll give a hundred as well.
Hey, that's not a pressure move, by the way, guys. I just believe in the project, so.
When I get home, my life's gonna kill me.
Tell her it was your first one, you didn't know it.
He thought you had to do it.
So Brendan, we, we do thank you for choosing us as your project, right? We, we've had some great experience with, with the scouts and with their Eagle projects, and again, we, we thank the scouts for thinking about us. It's exciting to see. That is an area that people see a lot, so we're excited to see the end project, and again, if there's any way we can support you as a committee, please reach out. Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
And Brendan, the superintendent will sign your form, that way you can get that for you. With that, we have some esteemed guests with us as well today, and with that, I want to welcome up Senator Moran to come on up and join us right up here, if you will. That way you don't have to stand, you can come join us. Thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am incredibly pleased to be here. Are we gonna tag?
Yeah, once you, once you both come on up, and we'll do this together, absolutely.
Sure, whatever's more efficient for the board.
Sure, we're also gonna welcome up Representative Lenatra. Thank you for joining us as well.
This is my first opportunity to meet everyone, to know everyone. So nice to meet you. Happy to be here. This tight schedule, I didn't think I was gonna make it, but Plymouth let me go a little early tonight.
Excellent, we appreciate your time.
We're more important.
I'll say that.
So we'd love to give you a chance just to kind of share what's going on in your world and up at State House, and then I know our committee will have some questions, I'm sure, but we'll be to the floor to start.
Why, thank you so much. I'm really appreciative to be at this particular forum, because my central focus has been for the last couple of years on education and children. I have the Common Start ME.org bill, which is focused on putting attention and uplifting not only children, but teachers right from zero, so that there are eyes on, on kids, and they end up getting the attention they need healthier, and then this entire state, I think, if we make that investment in children, will be more successful, and the country will be more successful going forward. I also have had a daughter who taught fourth grade, so I'm a public school kid, and I don't think there's really any better investment, and the fact that you all give your time towards that effort is just really appreciated, because if you don't have that guiding light, then, you know, people don't feel as, as confident and, you know, strong about the system, so you give folks that. I did bring a report, it's a little bit long, so I'm gonna kind of skip through, because I know your questions are gonna be more important, this is, you know, sort of more of an overview, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague and the Senate and the House of Representatives, of course, work very closely together, but they usually get to go first, so I kind of, I monopolize a little bit, so Kathy will kind of fill in the edges. Just starting with the ARPA and CARES funds, just looking generally, Plymouth County has got ninety million dollars, it probably sounds familiar, and Pembroke has been allocated a total of eight hundred and eighteen thousand in ESER funds, so far only eighty-one thousand of which have been claimed, so there's some, some play there. With respect to education allocations across the state, there's been a focus on food insecurity, I think a lot of communities have seen that, and looking at a hundred million dollars for grants to public school districts for facility needs and repairs. A hundred and five million for reserve account for additional funding for educational needs, including ten million for compensatory services for special needs students that have aged out during COVID, and ten million grants to address workforce challenges in approved special education programs. Pembroke has received an additional million dollars from DESI's Fiscal Year Twenty-One State Coronavirus Prevention Fund Program, which has been calculated based on funding equal to a sum of twenty-five dollars multiplied by the twenty-twenty-one foundation enrollment. And if we look toward the fiscal year twenty-three budget, the new administration is really looking at cornerstone investments that look toward education. The Student Opportunity Act is expected, the talk is sort of fifty-fifty between schools and transportation, and it's looking at investing about six billion in Chapter Seven funding for school resources. We're looking at a strong commitment toward early education, which I just mentioned, we're looking at, of that sixty, six billion in Chapter Seventy funding, Pembroke received thirteen million eight hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two in Chapter Seventy funding for fiscal year twenty-three. That's about a little less than one percent decrease from the prior year due to a small decline in enrollment, which I'm sure you, you're more aware of than I am. There are increases in facilities components for reimbursements for charter school formulas, which, you know, in, in my view, public schools have to get that important funding out first, but charter schools do have an eligibility as well. Turning a, a little bit toward the nutritional aspects in school meals, I think you're gonna see that lifted up even more, because the studies that are coming out now are still showing food insecure families, and, you know, if, if kids don't come in with a good nutritional background, very hard, as we know, to focus on learning. Vocational school, accessibility, you know, the, there are, overall in the state, there is a good in, sort of focus going on broadening vocational school opportunities. When we look at things that are happening broadly in the state, just for an example, turbine, looking in the ocean, there, there's still a sufficient workforce to really maximize that. When we look at wastewater issues, there's Governor Baker put out a very aspirational wastewater requirement, you know, he's, he's also put forth aspirational housing requirements. We're seeing that the workforce really isn't gonna meet the deadlines that we have, and we're turning towards vocational to really community colleges and also vacation, vocational schools to turn that around. We're looking at vocational schools really having a bigger importance going forward over the next decade, and I know that's something that's really in conversation, particularly in Pembroke, when we look at the high cost of that, and how is that gonna affect the community, and what can the state do to be sure that if there is, you know, new, new buildings, new infrastructure needed, new equipment needed, some of these courses do high technology, they need white rooms. It's, it's a very expensive proposal that's coming out, and so we're looking at funding that in a way that doesn't really crunch the taxpayer at the time when there are so many challenges. Look at, I mean, I know my electric bill is, is gone up about two-thirds of what it used to be, and most people, you know, you go to the grocery store, you go to the, you know, the gas pump, everything is incredibly expensive. The new administration with Governor Healy is really putting their staffing together. I have a meeting, for example, tomorrow with the Lieutenant Governor to give voice to what my community's concerns are, so this meeting is absolutely perfect timing in that regard. So I'm really, I'm gonna hand it over to Rep Lenatra, and just kind of listen and, and sort of take some notes about the things that I can bring to the administration for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ramsey. She comes with all the statistics, so I don't have a lot to say. But I, what I will say is, I read in Commonwealth Magazine today that the funding for school, because we're all talking about funding, I have seven school committees, and I'm sure you do as well, and we, you have eight, so she beats me all the time. So all I'm hearing about is funding, right, and transportation being one of them. I do know that you met with the superintendent of VOTEC last meeting, so I'm interested to hear about that. I know you wanted to explore VOTECs, right, and we all know that they're very difficult now to get into, as in the magazine that I read, the article, it says it's like the Harvard of VOTECs, it's like you have to go to Harvard to get into VOTECs, and they were And they were looking into a lottery system. So that was one of the things that was put on the table. So I don't know how much I can add. I can add that I think with this administration, she's really putting a lot more in education, funding, of course. I have the, you know, Silver Lake, I know you're very familiar with Silver Lake. We have the regional transportation system. Regional transportation, so we're trying to fund that. I know that transportation is an issue here in Pembroke as well. I work very well in partnership with Senator Moran. Education is very dear to me. I have four children, all, most of them went through public school. But I'm here to listen to you and get to know you, and you can get to know me, and see what you have to ask and exactly what we can bring back to the administration.
Does that open up the door? Susan starts.
Sure. Excuse me, seems like our talk I have to talk. Wait, you are correct. We've been looking at the VOTEC situation towards what the lottery, since I've heard about something like that. Because I know we were asking for some more insights on the recent changes to how folks are determined to be able to get in. Because that has, I think unexpectedly or inadvertently, unintended consequences to that change in how things were determined to where it impacted us pretty heavily. So I look forward to maybe some more conversation on that to see how we can help locally here. Funding is always on the rise. I know one of the first meetings when I first came on about a little over three years ago, we talked a lot about the Chapter 70 formula. And I think at that time, it was, had been at least 20 years since that had been revisited. And so some of my constituents do come to me and kind of say, if I didn't look at how I financed my home for 20 years, I probably wouldn't have it. Things are tight. We've had gas prices rise, which I think when you first came on board, I had spoken to you about that. The struggle with, there are a lot of mandates or underfunded or unfunded mandates. And I don't think we've been tracking it as tightly, only because it has hit around 15% of our budget, which is pretty significant, and that was several years ago. So these things are still concerns for folks in town. How do we keep up with it? Especially with, you know, inflation recently. I've had some come to me and say, does inflation, you know, we're paying more, but does that kind of generate additional income for the state because they're still taking a percentage of now higher amount? Could that translate into additional funds to come back to our community? These are the types of things that I'm hearing from folks. So when you have those conversations, I don't know if you're going to revisit that formula. But, you know, it's getting interesting to solve for the additional costs on things here. There's always the dialogue about transportation, especially as it relates to some of our SED needs. So all of these things are still there and we would love for you to advocate some ways for some of the smaller communities in the state like ours. And, you know, I hear it from folks, I work from Halifax, so, you know, they're feeling it. So smaller communities are feeling the crunch and it's difficult for our voice to maybe be heard as well as some of the larger communities. So we're counting on you to kind of help them.
Oh, I'll just start if that's okay. So that's exactly what my job is. I spent 30 years across the country litigating, essentially fighting for what people need. And to be able to have the privilege of doing that for my community is really the best job ever. And the only way that I can learn the details of what's going to be most important is by talking to you. So I can tell you right now, we will revisit the Chapter 70 formula. It's always, you know, it's always something that should come into the conversations to be sure that it's doing what it was originally intended to do. Not only that, Boston gets a lot of attention. Look at the MBTA, a lot of delayed maintenance there. My concern is that the funding for the more rural communities that we represent don't get just sucked right up there. And I appreciate Rep. Lenatra mentioning the lottery. I'll tell you that there are two bills. Senator Cronin in the Senate established a blind lottery piece of legislation to be considered. And in the House, Rep. Cabral filed legislation that would establish a weighted lottery when vocational tech high schools have more applicants than seats. There's certainly, you know, there's a concern that the tech schools have tilted more towards taking students that are more academically talented, that's their thing. Some people are, like my mom's an artist, I have messy handwriting. I mean, people excel in different things. And so that, those are the couple of things that Rep. Lenatra brought up. But, you know, this is why these conversations, and of course, we're always available by phone or by email, but to have all of your data in front of you and to speak as sort of one voice to say, this is what we need you to look at. You know, there are no, what we can do is shine a light on and have conversations and try to bring more voices to the table and see, you know, talk to other communities and just really press forward. It's a question we should be asking.
Thank you. We appreciate you advocating, especially for these smaller communities, because there's been some pretty big hits. And I know that the intents behind them were positive. But, you know, you should get in to find out there's the unintended consequences. They kind of spin around and get you. And that's what we're looking to try to solve our solutions for.
I'd like to mention, question one to the pass that was on the ballot. So those funds will go towards education and transportation. So that's just another source of funding that may be available. So that was just an article that I read today, and I did know about those bills. Thank you for bringing those up because I didn't write them down. And I'll follow that for you. But can I just ask, how is it with you now with the VOTEC? Just so I, like, where does that stand?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
We are not a member district to any vocational school. So for this year, for the far eighth grade students, they weren't on, traditionally we send students to Silver Lake.
Yes.
Or to South Shore VOTEC. And we shared none of our students were accepted to either of those technical schools. So even with both of the bills that you outlined here, the blind lottery, it still wouldn't allow our students' entrance because of the change in the criteria for Chapter 70. They have to take all of the
The kids in member towns before they can take kids from non-member towns.
That's where the crunch is for us right now. So at their last meeting, the school committee voted to put an article on the town meeting warrant for May to explore a regional planning committee to join South Shore VOTEC or a regional technical school. So that's where we're at. But I think for us, the piece associated with it, that's the biggest kind of unknown right now, is the financial piece. So, you know, we're talking about schools like South Shore VOTEC that are just beginning an MSBA building project in the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars and what the debt share for us here in Pembroke would look like and what that looks like for the taxpayers. So, you know, the intent is to spend the next six to eight months working on that planning committee and getting, presenting it to the town. We don't have, you know, no success in the town with debt exclusion, but that doesn't mean anything.
This is a worthy enough cause to push forward for. As most of us know, we have a work shortage, a worker shortage, right? Labor shortage, and most of it's in the trades. So there's a lot in the trades. So it's really a valuable tool to be able to get into a vocational school. And heavy, so I know when Pembroke left, I'm sorry if I'm repeating all this, I'm new to Pembroke. When Pembroke left Silver Lake, did you have a grace period where your Pembroke students could go there? Oh, there was no grace period?
There was no agreement. Part of the divorce, folks in town loving and helping. There's no agreement for our students to gain access to Silver Lake.
Okay.
Five years ago, the school committee voted to designate Silver Lake as our vocational school of preference, and that was too bold. Want to give them some financial stability and a number of students they could
Depend on sending each year as well as giving us some financial stability on the vocational choice. Because, as you know, the cost to attend Silver Lake is about half the cost to attend South Shore VOTEC. So we were looking for some kind of stability in that planning. And so for three or four of those years, our students gained admission to Silver Lake.
This year, for the first time, we didn't see any of our students.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I probably had more to add to that, but I'm so focused on the vocational schools. It's just my thing. I just think that, you know, back in my day, if you went to a vocational school, you would have thought less than, right? You know, like, everybody had to go to college. And really, it was the wrong message. I mean, we have guys and girls coming out of vocational schools with no college debt, making six figures in three years, and we need those workers. So, but funding too.
Yeah, we track our students, more than 60% of our kids that go to vocational schools are Silver Lake's problem as well.
Yes.
Which is a change from, you know, when I was
Right, right.
When I went to school and you got a job, 60% of our kids are Silver Lake's problem as well.
And that's what I'm, so that's what I'm afraid of when I read that article and they said it's like getting into Harvard, getting into vocational school, then we're missing this whole group of people. But I don't want to monopolize it on that. We can talk about that offline sometime.
Yeah, no, and I think that's the challenge we're finding is even with these solutions that we're looking at, we're talking four or five years out. So we've got a generation of high school students that are going to miss the opportunity. And so we're trying to figure out, how do we fill the gap? How do we give them an opportunity to go where their passion is, to go where their skill set is, still learn those because the workforce is going to need it? And how do we support them in that? So those are some of the challenges we're facing because of some of the policy changes.
And the cost, you're looking at $9 to $10 million debt exclusion?
The number that we gave last week was maybe higher than that.
More like 16, yeah. I mean, you know, so what are the upsides? You look at property values, which affect everyone. I mean, just spending six years on a board in Palmet, the parents of students wanted to build a dome field. They thought, you know, that would attract communities from all over, a great experience for the kids. But seniors wanted a new student center. So, you know, towns like families have to make choices. And so one of the commonalities that people talk about with property values. So, you know, looking at a great educational system that's really well-rounded is something that certainly folks do look at when they value property. So that's, you know, it's one thing that, but you, you know, the conversation, as you say, just kind of putting it out there, it's going to be something that's hard to look so much into the future with because it's, you know, they're planning on building it, what, 2025 or something?
They plan to do it in 2028.
Yeah, so that's a bit of a crystal ball. You've got to predict economical factors. And I'm sure you have other demands in town that folks are concerned about. So it's, anything that my office can do, we certainly work together all the time in terms of being a resource to please, you know, consider that. You know, I can tell you already kind of have this down, but just one more place.
Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate your thoughts on the subject. I think that Suzie really asked all the questions I really wanted to ask, and I just, you know, I do want to reiterate that I am hearing from a lot of people in town that the VOTEC issue is the biggest concern. You know, and it's specifically because, you know, our little town can, you know, putting that much money into the capital fund for South Shore VOTEC, which is closer to 17 million rather than the nine or 10 we were originally thinking, is just a lot for our community. And it's just a lot for our town, and it's a lot for a lot of the surrounding towns. And so we're really in a place where, you know, we have to make some really difficult decisions. And we still have just the regular capital issues, like fixing our current, we have five schools that are going to need updating over the next several years. And, you know, we're not new, these are not new schools. We have to, and so we have to make decisions. Do we, you know, do the VOTEC option or do we do the capital improvements on our current schools? You know, we're in a very difficult spot. So we really appreciate any advocacy, you know, to help us with being able to get our kids to, you know, just that whole rule about taking the in-district kids first is really setting it, making it impossible for any of the kids in these small towns. So any advocacy would be very much appreciated.
Unfortunately, there's limited seats, right?
Limited seats.
There's limited seats and there's limited instructors.
But at least we had a shot before.
Right.
And now we don't have a shot at all. None of our kids have a shot because they get, they have to take the in-district kids first, no matter what, you know, as long as they meet the minimum requirement. So it leaves towns like Pembroke and, you know, others like our, you know, of course, all of those towns that aren't within the, you know, the district are having the same issue, so.
Marshall just popped in. I can't, didn't Marshall?
They're in the process.
They're in the process.
They're trying.
Yeah, I think right now at this point, it's us and Duxbury and Hingham and Middletown.
Okay.
That are not within that district.
Yeah, you know, Susan kind of talked a little bit about that rule about taking the in-district kids first, which I think was started in 2014. And, you know, I think our acceptance rates were kind of gradually getting a little bit lower and lower each year as the rise in vocational tech got a lot more popular. You know, as VOTEC got a lot more popular, it seems though in 2021, there was a rule that DC put into effect, they voted on, that I think lowered standards for kids to get into VOTEC schools, if I'm not mistaken. And that really is when we went from dropping a little bit to, you know, dead zero. And with that rule going forward, we just don't seem to have any options to get our kids into a VOTEC school. So we're going through, you know, this process right now with South Shore VOTEC. It's, as everyone has said, it's going to be an extremely expensive process. What I would like to know is this, you know, this was, this rule in, this ruling in 2021 was kind of just dropped on everyone. Is there a way or is there a way to advocate or it helped to put some kind of a pause on something like that to allow schools or districts to prepare for it coming? So say like a, we'll put a, you know, I'm trying to think outside the box, but just put some kind of a three-year pause, not a grandfather, but just maybe like a pause on that rule to let a town like Pembroke or Duxbury prepare and get their ducks in a row and then say, okay, you know, we'll go, we'll go that route. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Sure.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, just in terms of the pipeline, he's looking more for a gradual slowdown where at this point it was just
It's just a cutoff.
Exactly. So, you know, I think it's something that can be looked into. And, you know, it's a matter of equity as far as, you know, towns that have paid in and the fact of the trends being to actually broaden enrollment. And, you know, I mentioned the two pieces of legislation that actually look at less of an academic focus and just a broader focus on talents of every kind, which would kind of be weighed, you know, it's one more hurdle for us to go through, right? That trend thing. But what's happening, and I think what Susan sort of, you know, the picture that's really painted is that communities that are smaller and with less means are now being disadvantaged. And I think that's where we might be able to get some, you know, some openings rather than going exactly against rules to be recently changed. So that's, I'm a strand.
Right, and to your point.
No, I like what you said.
Right, and Silver Lake's trying to increase their seats. We know that, right? And we know that's why South Shore is building a bigger building. Because we know the need is there, and so these opportunities are trying to grow themselves to provide that opportunity. But to, I guess to your point earlier about what other funds are coming that way, we would encourage obviously more opportunities, right? Whether it's another VOTEC in the area, whatever, because we know the need is growing. So I think continued support for that, that would obviously benefit us as we're going to be introduced to that.
And some of the COVID funds that just came towards education, oftentimes I know when I put forth legislation, if I get another senator, so if I want to do, for example, housing funding and, you know, I might be able to, just for throw a number out, $500,000 in my community, the trends for funding in the state of Massachusetts are if I hook up with an adjacent senator and we can get three housing projects funded, I got $3 million in that way. So there's, you know, in terms of municipal conversations and agreements, that's sort of another thing to look at that I'm just seeing trending. I don't know if that makes sense, but that, that's just another thing to put on your thinking act about.
So now you're lucky you have two representatives instead of one, see? How that goes, because we each get a bite of the apple?
Absolutely.
Yes, we team up with the House.
Yeah, we team up with the Senate. So that's helpful.
What are the things that we talked about that is beneficial for us and would be beneficial for Silver Lake as well is to allow each vocational school to make their own
for Silver Lake as well is to allow each vocational school to make their own agreement. So their own entrance criteria. Obviously, as you referenced before, a lot of the attention was towards Boston and larger, you know, urban school districts. And that, from what we understand, is a catalyst for what the change in the enrollment policy was. But, you know, like I know for, for us, having an agreement with Silver Lake is beneficial for us and for them financially. So, you know, potentially taking a look at that change in the enrollment regulation to allow districts or.
Mental health school districts?
To make their own entrance criteria.
Have you had that discussion with Jill?
We have had that discussion with Jill. Jill is interested in that as well, you know, because we do, we do provide financial stability for them. But at this point, what we've gotten from pushback is that they don't, under the current wording of the regulation, they don't have the ability to make their own changes to that.
I like that idea though, because as a community, you know your students and the, the sort of demographic of your community. So I'm, I'm going to push that up as well.
Ladies, thank you. By the way, I want to thank your staff. I was the gentleman that got to call your offices. And they were great about returning phone calls, getting back to me and this day work and all that stuff. So please, thank your staff. I don't want to reiterate a lot of what my colleagues have said, but I did work on the Hill back under two speakers in the early eighties. So I'm showing my age there a little.
Oh, kidding, what'd you do?
I was actually assistant to the chairman for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on the House side. So I had a big fancy title and business card and a cute little office. And it was a three-ring circus of constituent services. So.
Spectacular. That's the most important.
That's the most important.
I enjoyed it a lot. So I, I do know how it works. And I, and I say respectfully, you know, these ladies to my right, you know, Mary Beth, Jess, Erin, Natalie, we're working our tail off here. And I'm not saying other schools aren't trying, but, you know, I just heard, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually going to lose a little chapter seventy money because our enrollments are down, you know? We're, we're losing some kids, whether it's the B.C. High, Cairo Spelman, Ochi Bills, you know, wherever it happens. We're not losing to the VOTE schools, I can tell you that much. But on our end, right now, at least in my opinion, Massachusetts is flush with cash. And, and I say this respectfully, the two of you, Josh, you know, it's kind of your job to get it back here to us. You've got to be our voice. I thought it was a great comment you made. I think a lot of rural people have to get together.
Mm-hmm.
You know, again, I use an example. I'm not here trying to start a war, but we put forty million dollars into the mass and cash problem to have the people go away for two months and they're back. So there's forty million dollars, in my opinion, we wasted. You want to give forty million dollars to Pembroke, to Kingston, to Plymouth, to whoever, I think we could do a hell of a lot with forty million dollars. So.
We certainly deserve our fair share.
Well, that's what I said. And, and, you know, I'm not saying you're not doing your jobs. I just, you know, want you to know, we're working here, hard down here. We know you're working hard for us. But yeah, maybe you have to team up with a couple of different reps and senators.
Yeah.
And kind of put it together.
We do have a World Caucus this year.
Do we really?
Yes, we do. So I'll tell you, I'm on that. So that is, you know, we're working that way.
Yeah.
We're working that way. Because we talk about it all the time. It's, Boston's the center, right? But everyone's moving out of Boston. They're coming, I'm a Realtor too.
Yeah.
They're all coming down here. So it's time that we.
You can't afford to live in Boston.
The money's down as well.
Right now. Yeah, it, it's, there's no way. So you just keep moving. I keep laughing when you look at like the towns like Oxbridge and Sutton and places like that. People, oh, I commute to Boston to work. I'm like, from Oxbridge or from Sutton. I mean, that's, that's a bit of a hike.
Yeah.
So I'll leave it on that. But thank you for coming. Again, thank your staff. It was so nice of them to engage us. And whatever you can do to help us, help these ladies, help our team, help the people sitting out there. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I feel bad. My back's been, my back's hurt the whole time. I'm sorry.
And just finally for me, I think we hit on a couple of things. We talked about the food insecurity, right? And so over through the last three, three years or so through the COVID stretch, we've been able to provide free lunches. Is that something that you anticipate will continue?
That's something that there's more of a need now than ever. So crystal ball, I would say yes.
Because I know, I mean, we've talked.
Yeah, my bet would be yes.
The need is there, right? And as we continue to move forward.
Helps a lot of parents out.
Yep.
You know, it really does.
The learning environment is a challenge if you're, if you're hungry, right?
Exactly.
And so we know the, the benefit that the, the students have had through the stretch because of that. So we do appreciate the, the support that's been there. And we'd love to see that continue. I think the other piece of it too is, that's a great segue is we've just come out of a, a period where there was a lot of funding in the House of Commons, right? Whether it was Esser funds, DUC funds, the money was there. And now we're sort of coming out of that stretch. And so we're looking at probably a pretty tight budget this year. So when we talk about funding and support, the need is still there. Mental health is still there. The challenges that our educators have, our students have, that hasn't gone away. So we would encourage and continue to look for support to help us meet those needs. Whether, moving forward, mental health is going to be a big piece. And we continue to be a valued staffer in the last couple of years to help meet those needs in each of our buildings. And, and so to continue to get funds to help us support that way, I think is a big piece of it. Our special needs program, our circuit breaker funds, seeing those continue to grow as we try to meet the biggest needs in our district for that. All areas that we're going to continue to need support from.
Absolutely. And, and the Senate in particular has moved forward with mental health to really put it in a level playing field with physical health because there is such a need. So it's, it's going to continue to be an adjustment. I think, you know, it's almost like the market through COVID. For example, everyone got back their sixty-two F or sixty-four F, whatever, the tax funding. Well, that was something, those funds were already sort of planned for other programs. And so with those funds gone, there's another adjustment period that the new administration is coming into. They really focused on things like food insecurity, like education, like housing. So I think over the next probably four months, you're going to start to see how that's rolling out. And really, as you see, you know, as you have questions, ideas, as things come to mind, the idea of, you know, how do we tweak the formula? Can it get extended? Can it be a grandfather period? Just, you know, continue that conversation because, you know, we are, I know both of us just, we fielded a tremendous amount of inquiries. And as a member of a Board of Selectmen and chairing for so long and chairing the county government, what I, I always made it my goal to serve up whoever has what I need. I, I put it on the plate right in front of them. And there's a bit of a squeaky wheel thing. It's just so, I just continue to really encourage that conversation. I, we work for you and everyone there. So there's nothing more gratifying than doing a good job at that. And that's getting you what, what you need.
Do I have a more question?
Sure.
And I'm sure you've heard it from some of your other committees, but obviously as we started our funding cycle this year, the big issues that's come up here in Pembroke and has come up at the tax stage is the increase in the operational services to the tuition rate. So for our special education students in out-of-district placements, for the past thirteen years, the average has been a hundred and percent. And they're proposing a fourteen percent A3 student. So for us here in Pembroke, that's four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars that we wouldn't have been planning on. That is something that, you know, I think every community has probably reached out. I know we've sent letters, ASF.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone has sent letters. But that, that level of increase in a budget that generally rises two, two and a half percent each year is absolutely just morping on our ability to keep up. And so we want to make sure that that's something that you're, is on your radar to advocate about because it affects everybody at this point.
It does. And I have many calls about it. So we're just starting, the House is starting the budget process. Like, so we got the budget in April. When did we do our budget? May? Uh, right after. Right after us. So this is the time that the budget will be put together. We'll see what that's going to do. There's always amendments we throw in. There's airlocks we throw in. And the governor's supposed to be March first. I have hers, March first, but I thought it would be delayed maybe. Who knows? March is right around the corner. So, you know, this is the.
So we usually have a chapter seventy idea by now.
Right. So, so you don't.
Have a thing.
Right, right.
Which is, oh, it's, it's difficult to take steps forward in the process.
I'm sure. It's very frustrating and difficult.
If you look at the trends, I know that you had mentioned some funding associated with Esser. We have been fiscally conservative with our funds. The reason why we haven't drawn down on Esser three is because we have a guideline to go through September first of twenty twenty-four and to put eighty minutes on our buildings. So we have really planned for every single one of those dollars. But if you look at in two thousand and eleven, when we all came off of the ARA funding, that was the last time we had a substantial increase in chapter seventy. Do you predict that that is what it will look like coming out of the VA's funding?
Mass Municipal, I think, is asking for that, which is some indication. It's a little early to really make that prediction.
Yeah. I want to say something and then have to double back on it. You know, I really don't.
Generally, we get whatever the minimum is, the thirty dollars, that's really all we get for an increase. But in that year in particular, I think our increase is a little over four, four percent.
And we're still funding the student opportunity act too. So there's some additional funding there that will.
We get a solid seventeen.
Okay.
We need your help.
I guess so.
Well, we have our marching orders.
Yes.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
I have to call the Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ladies. Thanks for coming.
If you would mind, a question from the audience before you go.
Oh, sorry.
Is there anyone that has a question?
I'm curious, since we had the agreement with Silver Lake, and that's gone away now in terms of getting our students accepted there. I don't know the answer to the question, but.
Would it be possible to amend the agreement with Silver Lake and get approval through DOE that would allow our students to attend there? And then we would get some preference in that process?
Right. And that's what we asked at this point. There is no.
Well, I, I understand that. But I'm saying to the representatives here, could something be done with DOE to allow that to happen and to, you know, to, to make it possible to get some of our students in there? Or are we saying that they're full and they can't put any students in there? Because I know they're doing an expansion of their VOTEC program there. So the question is, is the problem there are no slots? Or the problem is the new rules in effect are preventing them from accepting our students?
So it's a combination. Obviously, they've filled all of their available spots with students from Kingston, Lexington, Halifax. In years past, our students would get acceptance because they ranked higher on the entrance criteria than those in-district students. So.
Okay.
They have filled all their seats with kids in their town and they have a waitlist. But at the same time, they don't have the ability to take our kids, to even rank them on the list for acceptance.
Right. Well, that, the, the acceptance rules have all gone away, I understand now, correct? There's no, there are no, you're, you're technically not allowed to set standards for admissions for these schools now.
So as Senator Brandon and Senator Cora alluded to, the admission criteria has changed. It's less academic, it's more on the interview, the interest of the student, those type of pieces. Where before there was an academic, a discipline, an interview, there was, you know, seven criteria for entrance.
Okay.
There are still, there's still entrance criteria.
Yeah, and the DOE rules or guidelines are saying that everyone connected with VOTEC admissions should be, receive training in order to be able to adjust their rules so that minorities get preference to other students. That's in their guidelines. Okay? So that's all part of the push for equity. Okay? So now it's frozen everyone in the state. And there've been a lot of superintendents who have written the Department of Education explaining how this has simply put a stop to VOTEC for any towns like Pembroke or Duxbury or anyone else. And yet DOE has been silent on this issue. So they haven't even been allowed to say, for instance, would it be cheaper for Pembroke to contribute some funds to the expansion of Silver Lake, which would be far less than the entrance to South Shore? Okay? And it would allow our students then, they could build, they want to build, they could expand a bit more. You might even include Duxbury in that equation to make even a larger school. And then that would lay the groundwork for as VOTEC increases in need, and it's increasing, it's a national trend, that maybe other towns could get together and would have the, the groundwork and the framework set for a standalone VOTEC school for the South Shore, for our students and for others in the district. But it seems that there's some inflexibility on the part of DOE to allow changes and cooperative agreements that would allow us to be able to do something like that and think outside the box and get something done, instead of everyone being afraid to do anything because they don't know if they're going to be outside the rules and, and so forth. So in your experience, is this something that you might be able to go to DOE and lobby on our behalf to get them to see if we can put something together that would benefit our students?
Absolutely. I think there's every reason with the new administration to look at things differently and to look at ways that we can have some different kinds of economy in terms of the cost and looking at broader opportunities for more students. Because one thing we know is that the need is that there be more vocational opportunities. So certainly.
How would we go about working with you on that?
You know, it's always helpful to send emails to our offices. And that gives us something to say, this is what my community is telling me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Beth. Did you just want to state your name again?
Melissa Houli. Thank you, Pam. Thank you guys for coming. So thankfully, a lot of my questions have been answered or partly answered. One of them was just, I just wanted to know how much awareness there was to you guys for our town, specifically Pembroke. I know that I reached out to you, Kathy, and sent you a video of our school committee. You said you'd get back to me. I'm sure you're busy. I didn't hear back. But just in hearing the conversation, it doesn't sound like you guys, you know, were super aware, specifically our issues of us getting none, not enough of our kids in. And this started last year, expected to be, you know, the years forward because we're out of district. I was also, it, it started with how much do you guys know? Because I was wondering if we have formally let Desi know of this in writing or email?
Yes. So I sent a letter to the, in regards to the change in the enrollment policy and how that affected our students here in Pembroke. I know that Duxbury also sent the same letter.
Okay, thank you. No, that's just super helpful, just to know that if they're aware of the issues. I was, because I was just going to ask that we do that tonight if, if it hasn't been done. Just because, I mean, like I said, this started a year ago. And I just didn't, almost a year ago. And I just didn't know how you guys were up to date on it, you know, with us. And I haven't, because I feel like a lot of time has gone by and a lot of kids have missed out on the opportunity. I know we talk about equity, but where's the equity if we have a whole community of kids not able to attend vocational school at all?
You know, that, pardon me, that brings something to mind just while I think of it. If you don't mind, if you haven't already forwarded that to our offices, a copy of the letter, that's something that we can lift up as well. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Because I didn't know that you would be meeting with them tomorrow because also one of my requests was going to be that while you were here with the school committee, if a joint letter could be sent to them just to let them know that all here attest to the rule change specifically affecting our kids and eliminating access. I think that's the big thing. I know that there's an interest that's gone up. Regardless of the interest, we have no chance at all. Just because with the admissions change, even if the interests go back down a little bit to what it was, they still have to take all of their in-district kids first. So with no admissions criteria as far as what the changes were, it definitely just takes us out of the initial sweep. So, and I just didn't know if now that you are aware of it, what your suggestion is for Pembroke, what can we do now to, for the kids that are applying this year or hope to apply next year? What is your suggestion for a solution?
You know, I haven't read the rules specifically. I've looked at a review and looked at the facts. And, you know, it's tough to make a promise that, you know, the superintendent having tried to already express concern about the effect of the rule, it seems that there still is a role. So I think, you know, I don't see a, a very immediate solution.
Right.
But certainly we'll look for one and certainly we'll look towards one.
Sure. So when I did ask Mr. Cutler, he did say that he thinks in the long run that becoming a member town would be beneficial. And so, you know, this committee's working towards that goal. But even in, you've heard the, there was a lot that was discussed, the amount of money it's going to cost and put on the town and us as taxpayers. And aside from the money, if it even, if we could even get it to pass here in Pembroke, which will be very hard, aside from the money. aside from the money, it's the length of time before we'd even see any kids getting in. I think it was like three years would be the fastest we might see any kids getting in. And that's going to be a very minimal number. So just knowing that, even just to start the process, if that even passes, we'd be getting very minimal kids in. In that amount of time, that's, just knowing that, walking out of this room, you know that here in Pembroke, there will be at least three more years of kids not getting into vocational at all.
One thing that will be helpful is if the advocacy efforts that you're talking about grow and there is sort of an upswell of commitment by the town to look and decide that the cost is worth it. That's something that will add to, you know, sort of the elements that we're going to put forth to the ministry, to the administration to try to expedite the timeline.
Right, and I think if this was the only issue that was facing the town, we might have, you know, a good shot. I think as others have mentioned, we're up against big odds. It's not in our favor. So one of the questions I had was DESI, if they are aware of, you know, what's going on and how the admissions rule has changed in communities like ours, are they willing to put any funding towards helping us to become a member town? Or if there are any efforts working towards that that would help us at all? Because as I mentioned, we need all the help that we can get. I know the committee is trying. And as a town, we're going to try. I think it's just, it's just really tough in these times right now with all that's up against us, so. I think that was, I think, I'm a little shocked just hearing, like, how, like I said, that it's been a year. So just, I think more meetings like this or more advocacy, I don't know if it's a liaison issue about our issues here with this, just to you guys, just so that you're as up to speed as can be. And hopefully, you guys can be in more contact with this board and with us as a town in general. Just letting us know what you hear back, advocating for us, advocating for our kids. I would greatly appreciate that. And my last comment, I'm sorry that's so long, but my last comment was just more to ask the committee. I know that right now, we have a vocational, technical education policy that designates Silver Lake as the preferred. I think at this point, I don't know how that benefits us. I think especially where we're looking into trying to explore membership to another vocational. I think that it's actually maybe counterproductive to have a policy that states that our preferred school is a different school. I didn't know if you guys wanted to revisit that now that we're in this time and maybe vote to get rid of it.
Well, we did talk a little bit about that at our last meeting, right?
I know they talked about it.
And as the ebbs and flows of this process goes, that would be something we would have to obviously change if we become part of the Silver Lake, or South Shore VOTEC district. Right now, there's still opportunity there, depending upon the seat. So I think it probably behooves us to stay there for now, especially as they're potentially, potentially continue to grow. And that's a short-term opportunity where South Shore is potentially four to five years down the road, right? So we want to at least keep that option open. And then if we see things change, then that's something that we...
So just so I'm clear, are you saying if we don't have this policy in place, that Silver Lake will not entertain taking our kids?
So the change to the policy in 2016 was a joint change that we made here in Pembroke. I also attended the school committee meeting in Silver Lake for them to change their policy as well. That says that they would accept our students as a school of preference. So obviously, if the town meeting vote... Change, you know, votes in favor of exploring, which is, I think, something that we all have decided was a no-brainer. It's non-binding, there's no financial commitment, it's really exploring it. Then absolutely, I would see that policy changing in the future. At this point, we work ahead at South Shore VOTEC, multi-years out, three to four years to get any of our kids in. Five to six years for that building project to be even close to completion. Silver Lake is looking to add two additional shops to their current building. They have space for it over the next two years. It's possible that our students will have a better chance of getting into Silver Lake in those two years while we're still working with South Shore VOTEC. So becoming a member town to South Shore VOTEC, it trumps the policy anyways because of the priority.
Right. I just wanted to look as best as we could moving forward into trying to join in membership if we can. That having a policy that favors another school kind of made me feel like maybe we should get rid of it at this point.
Sure.
But I appreciate your explanation and that they also had a policy change. I understand how that works. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
And just for the sensitivity of their time, if there's anything sort of out of the realm of what we've covered already, please feel free.
There's a question I'm going to go off to that's very similar to what you asked.
Okay. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. So while they're making the adjustments to the screen, no further adjustments to the agenda? Communications are all set, no schedules all set. Superintendent's report.
So the first thing under my report tonight is the Special Education or Student Services budget presentation. So I am going to turn it over to Jess, but I failed to front-load last week, so I will front-load this week. These budgets are done in a silo, right? So the expectation here is that department heads, central office directors, sit down and make the plan for their department to move their department forward, to identify goals. Where do we want to be next year? Where do we want to be in three years? Where do we want to be in five years? That process itself is a worthy process, whether we have the funding for it or not. So these budgets are written in a way that we're looking forward to move the departments and to move the schools forward. But we understand that as we start to get through the cycle and prioritize, once we have a Chapter 70 number and a number from the town, that many of these things are wishless items. But we still want you to know that we're thinking about the moving forward of the schools and what that would take, regardless of the fiscal constraints that we have, so.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Okay, so tonight, I put together a presentation, kind of sectioned off in the four areas of student services. The big one being special education, kind of the buzz that we often talk about. And Section 504, Accommodation Plans, which I will get into as well. Social, emotional learning and behavioral supports, which we talk often about. And we've increased certainly the supports in place through support in the last couple of budget cycles. As well as our English language learner education and our nurses. I'll get this right. So I just wanted to kind of identify our current staffing as I go through kind of some data points and the importance of the current staff that we have to at least maintain in order to educate our children, provide services and supports. In special education, we have a large amount of staff off to the left in that box. Anywhere from our team chair, which is our administrative positions that oversee the special education process in each of our buildings, as well as the importance of our teachers and all our support staff down to contracted services. So there are some services in special education that we don't require a full-time employee. And sometimes it's just a few hours, a month of a specialty. For instance, an educational audiologist for a student that may be deaf. So we do contract for some of those services. In addition, over to the right, the importance of our five social workers. Our contract service providers, again, these are positions, our behaviorist can be licensed as a B C B A or a L A B A, which is a licensed applied behavior analyst, analyst, and our registered behavior technician. So when we think about an R B T, you've probably heard us talk about that. That is the person working directly with our students, oftentimes modeling behavior plans, teaching staff so that they, more of an intervention model. And I'll talk a little bit about kind of how we've been able to fund that through some of the ESER funding up to this point. As you know, we added a teacher in our compass program, so we have that support at the high school. And then our Titan Labs as therapeutic resource rooms this year. We have four English language education teachers who are E S L teachers as well. That was another addition to support the growing needs of our English language learners. And then we have 5.6 nurses, again, another position that we've added, that 0.6 nurse. And then we do have one L P N and a one-to-one nurse this year. So kind of in, as far as enrollment in special education, and again, a lot of data here just to kind of support the level of need with our staffing currently. And then I'll talk a little bit about some of those wish lists and some of the requirements in order to stay in compliance. So in special education, over the last few years, you'll see certainly an increase. We have stayed within kind of where the state has gone with percentages. As even though our enrollment has dropped, our special education needs have increased. So such things as social, emotional supports and disabilities that have really impacted the need for that specialized instruction. But again, we've kind of stayed within that percentage of the state increase as well. We have gone up a little bit in our added district students. So over the course of this year, we did have several students move into the district that were already in added district placements. So those placements were made, so those are the statehood placements. As I talk about placements, again, I know Mike is new, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But as we look at special education, I've talked over the years, probably at nauseam, about kind of how we support our students. Our least restrictive, how we want to always start with our students is in those classrooms in our general, it's classrooms as considered a full inclusion support. So students get instruction from those content area teachers. And then we support in the classroom with our special educators. That is the largest majority and where we really want to see our students if they're able. And then it gets more restrictive. So some students require pull-out out of the classroom for partial inclusion, all the way up to students that may need added district placements in collaboratives, private day programs, and then a small population of our students that require residential placements. Outside of special education, Section 504, which is a federal regulation that looks at students and adults in a workforce that present with a disability, where that disability impacts their life functioning. And in the school setting, we think about their environment, the school buildings, as well as learning as a life function. So some students require more of accommodations in order to access that curriculum and instruction. And just like in special education, you'll see, we've certainly increased students on those 504 plans over the last year or two. Again, that social, emotional piece, students presenting with disabilities in that kind of emotional disability and/or health.
And those represent within our schools or are they out of district?
Within our schools. So Section 504 plans are building-based plans and/or environment. So an adult could have a 504 plan in their work because it is a federal law under Individuals with Disabilities Act. Just to kind of highlight some of the accomplishments this year, and I'm sure you've seen a push out information about our tiered focus monitoring, which is an audit of special education and civil rights. This is a mandate that happens every three years. So DESI is looking at our compliance on multiple aspects. Everywhere from our programming to our staffing, how we work with students in the evaluation process, civil rights as far as students' rights as well. They looked this year at early childhood referrals and transitions. It is a two-year process for us. So the first year, we are doing what's called a self-assessment. So we are submitting documents and procedures in order to prove that we're in compliance with regulations. This year, they come, they came on-site, they conducted interviews, and they also reviewed about 10% of our students' special education files, looking for compliance, consistency, et cetera. And then there was a parent piece as well. So they interviewed CPAC, which is our special education parent advisory council, as well as surveying all of our families with students with disabilities. So we were in full compliance. So I've been in this position for nine years, and this is the first time that we've been in full compliance. There's always usually some feedback, which we obviously welcome to tweak any procedures or things that we need to change. But this is a celebratory for us that we worked really hard in the last couple of years in those areas. DESI accountability level, again, that we're meeting requirements. They're looking at multiple aspects, not just with special education. They're looking at accountability. Again, they're looking at any complaints. So there's a system called P R S through DESI where parents are advocates. Support personnel to families may file a complaint that we're not in compliance, not just with special education, but could be regulations disciplinary or otherwise that we're not following. And then they'll look at data to assure that we're spending the same amount of money that we are with students with disabilities as our non-disabled students as well. And we are meeting requirements on all aspects. And then, of course, even though we have lots of supports and we appreciate all the levels of support and added positions over the last few years in those departments, there are some what we consider kind of required additions if we want to remain in compliance with students' special education needs. So there's two kind of areas, and those are bolded, which I consider required. Obviously, as we go through the budget process, we kind of tease out what we, as Erin said, kind of our leveled priorities and bring to you a proposed admin recommended budget. Typically, those required, I always encourage at our administrative team that in order to remain in compliance. So we certainly support students and do have the need, as we talk about inclusionary supports, to add a paraprofessional this year, as well as increasing that behaviorist line, as I talked about earlier. And I'll talk about how we've been funding some of those pieces. We contract for that position. We've done work over the years to look at kind of fiscal, what's more responsible. And we've come to usually the understanding it is still a part-time position. So we haven't added that as a kind of a staff person, but we do contract for those services. But based on kind of the level of need of students this year and some of the additional supports we're giving through ESER funding, if we remain at that to stay in compliance with those services, it would be about adding about five hours a week to that role to consult with our staff. And that is a behaviorist role. So those go in a consultation model in an I E P, usually. Sometimes it's in 504 plans as well. The smaller ask is just to reiterate, I know in Mary Beth's teaching and learning presentation, she also mentioned the DIBELS screener. We are using hand scoring of that. The DIBELS universal screener is not only, you know, a good tool for our early literacy to identify those, you know, benchmark data and students that aren't meeting benchmarks in each of those areas. But also, it does fall under one of the guidances of a universal screening for dyslexia. So dyslexia is a specific reading disability. DIBELS allows us to screen for that. So I would encourage us to fund that online scoring to be more helpful to our reading specialists and our building-based staff. The bigger of the asks is an added district coordinator. So I'm looking to add a 0.3, so that would be 0.3 of a full-time position. It's about 10.5 hours a week if we think about kind of a section of a full-time staff member. Currently, Megan Cullum is our secondary special education coordinator, and that falls under her responsibilities. Right now, she also oversees all 7 through 12 special education. So that's at the high school. She's primarily based, she's running all the special ed department there between, you know, 100 and some students as far as their I E Ps, the process, working with families, paperwork, running those meetings. And then she does oversee our middle school as well. So as far as a larger department, 7 through 12, as a kind of a content coordinator and working with our PCMS team chair, Tom Walsh, as well. Working on tricky kind of cases, providing feedback and working with our staff, you know, to enhance those teachers as well for professional development. She evaluates 7 through 12 staff as well and our 18 to 22 population as well she oversees. And then just the day-to-day responsibilities. Over the last couple of years, the needs of our added district students have increased not only by numbers, and it's slightly up about five more students this year, but the needs of the students. So they are more complex. They are placed in placements that sometimes have to change. So that requires looking and making new referrals to placements, having more meetings. And then the last, you know, few years, she's been able to kind of do it, I guess, more at ease because a lot of it's been virtual. And now back to in-person meetings. Most of our added district placements are not geographically located close to Pembroke. So when she's going to a meeting, it's taking a good portion of the day to travel to, whether it's the 128 Belt or Boston, et cetera, to run meetings, do observations that are required, et cetera. So I am looking to add that position into the budget. Just historically, for those people who may not know, that was a position we had from 2005 to 2017. And then obviously, with budget... 2005 to 2017, and then obviously with budget reductions, that was something that was reduced. Back in 2017, I did part of it in my role, and then the secondary coordinator, we kind of shared. She's taken on more of it over the last couple of years, as just things have changed, department-wise as well. And then I still help out as much as I can with a few of our higher-profile students.
Just for clarity on that, Jess, so is she full-time, or is she a .7, and we're making her full-time?
So a .3, I'm sorry, is an additional position, so it would take the responsibility.
So a part-time, 10-hour-a-week position?
Yes, take it out of her responsibilities. Megan is the secondary coordinator, so she's a full-time employee. And then, as we've talked about several times, even this year, and just in this past conversation with our representatives, kind of that continued need for our social, emotional, behavioral supports, we're still seeing the same kind of presentation and difficulties for students across the board, pre-K, all the way up to our population of 22, in and out of district. Students having difficulty, obviously, continued coping skills and anxiety, school avoidance, depression, executive functioning, they're significantly struggling. And certainly with the support that we've had, been able to build, and some of the programming, it's definitely helped, but that need is still there.
Is it increased, or is it decreased? I mean, has it had?
So I think the needs are more prevalent, as we've gone back to kind of full-fledged more hybrid, there was a lot of different supports last year, we were easing back into kind of, you know, normal education. This year, it continues to be difficult. Resources outside of school continue to be a struggle for students and families, so finding therapists, waiting lists for hospitalizations, some of the data points I mentioned, just students' difficulties with hospitalizations, we've definitely seen an increase, but even those are waitlists for students to be able to find appropriate bed at a place for hospitalizations or therapists. There's still waitlists, difficulty, some therapists are available, but not during the times that students need, as well as virtual offerings versus in-person or going into home. And then just staffing difficulties in general across the board, with being able to provide staffing even in the added district, kind of supports agencies that are out there, so. But just some data, again, points about 21% of our students present with disabilities in the area of emotional or health, so those are either outside diagnoses, having to do with mood disorders, attention deficit disorders, emotional disabilities, which is a large number. Typically, in the years past, it would be usually our smallest population of students, 5%, and that's really increased over the last few years. And just some additional data, as we've talked about many times, as far as our counseling needs and caseloads, each year we kind of bring, when I talk about social, emotional, learning updates, the amount of students that access our current staff, social workers and school psychologists, not necessarily in special education, but across the board in general ed, both in small group kind of lunch bunches, social groups, as well as individual counseling. So that's a close to 300 students of ours, work with our mental health staff at one point and the other throughout this current year. And again, something we've talked about before, just the levels of support we have for students. Tier one is always things we talk about that happen for all of our students in the classroom setting, whether it's general education classroom, and general ed, teachers is implementing a curriculum, or it's our mental health staff. At the secondary level, classes such as 21st Century Skills, some of our advisory programs, and then some additional work we've done on programs that Dr. McGarrett has talked about, like the Science of Suicide program, use of our therapy dogs. Tier two generally happens when tier one is not working, and it's not enough for a student, so we intervene, and our mental health staff often work with students, whether that's in the classroom supporting or taking kids out, as I mentioned, that small group, to support kind of that level of need. And then tier three would be our most intensive supports, and this is all through our instructional support teams, as I've mentioned before. And these are students that may access that Titan Lab at the elementary school, our Compass Program, one-to-one counseling by our mental health staff, and then that behaviorist RBT model. So someone's going in, taking a look at behavior, trying to figure out the function of it, creating behavior plans, allowing the RBT to go in and work through that behavior plan with a student and staff in the classroom, to be able to kind of model and implement a particular program in order to kind of pull back in hopes that the students, whether it's they're independent, with kind of, you know, rectifying the behavior, or their supports in the classroom are able to do so. And again, some more data, again, as I mentioned at the first couple of slides, currently we have 12 hours of contracted services for our behaviorists, primarily for special education services through their IEP, so consultation directly to staff and families at times. We have been lucky enough to use ESER funds to add in about 100 more hours this year between the needs of special education, as well as that intervention model, and that RBT as well. So those are things that would go away at the end of this year, due to obviously grant funding. There's just some data about those functional behavioral assessments, so those are assessments that we have done on students through special education, when we see a behavior and we're not sure of the function or how to work with a student. So what is the reason for the behavior, what's happening before, what's happening during, and what happens after, in order to figure out, you know, what is that function, and why is that student behaving like they are, and what do they need in order to kind of work on that behavior to make improvements? So those are some of the data pieces. Currently, right now, we have about 29 students that receive those behaviorist services through special education, and about 13 students that have home services. So again, those are contracted services, we use Pilgrim Area Collaborative Pieces program, and we contract to provide services in students' homes, working directly with students as well as parent training. So some more asks, again, that ESER funding will go away, so that ability to have that RBT in our school system, to be able to model and implement behavior plans with some of our students, both in special ed and in general education, I am requesting that we fund 30 hours of contracted services for that RBT through our budget. I know these are a lot of asks, it's my least favorite night of the year, so it's always money.
Until the show's on, we're gonna get it.
But as you'll see, I'm asking for about half of what Mary Beth is asking.
Too shady.
I just heard the bus roll over your head.
In addition, this would be a brand-new kind of position and idea in regards to a coordinator of behavioral health, wellness, and counseling. This position would be an addition, and so an additional administrative position, that would allow us to have somebody be able to kind of look at the vertical alignment of all of our services, our programming, explore additional behavioral intervention models, work with our, both our mental health staff, our nursing staff, as we talk about kind of behavioral health as well, look at counseling and guidance, more consistency amongst seven through 12 with guidance as well, as well as explore resources, not only for families, but outside agencies as well. So we have certainly made do, and we appreciate all the support, the staffing that we've been allowed to add. I manage some of it, and the principals really take on a large role, but certainly our mental health staff deserve to have somebody, you know, more consistent and cohesive in order to promote that learning community amongst them, and as well as be consistent, kind of that vertical alignment, when we think about pre-K to 22 programming. I did, sorry?
No, I was just gonna lead in to, I think, what you're saying.
Yes, so I did apply for a grant through the Department of Public Health to fund this position. It's not an entitlement grant, so we will see. The grant closed just this past Friday, so I anticipate in the next couple of weeks we will see if we receive any of that funding. I did request a large amount of money, so we're hopeful.
You never know if you don't ask.
Right, so I think, you know, Mary Beth has certainly assisted, but I wrote an eight-page kind of grant application, it was all narrative, to support kind of our needs, and some of the data that I talked about tonight was included in that, so that would be a great.
For folks that are newer to the committee, we did have a director of guidance up until 2017 as well, that was cut during the admin restructuring then. So though it's not necessarily a one-to-one on the position, we did have an admin position associated with guidance for several years at the high school.
And then our English language learners, certainly another population of students, as I think about kind of all the departments that fall under Student Services, we've been stable in the last couple of years, around 70 students. We did add a full-time position last year, so we have four ESL English Language Learner teachers under the ELE kind of department. Kind of broke through kind of their levels, as we think about levels of support. We have about 50 students that receive direct instruction for language proficiency. We have an additional 24 students that require monitoring, so not necessarily taken out of the classroom or pushed into support, but we're monitoring their success, their progress, et cetera. And we have about 40 families that require, whether it's written, translations, or interpreters. And so those are all requirements, if a family identifies as such, we do contract out and send out a lot of those, but we do some of that in-house as well. We have 14 right now, 14 different languages, our largest population Arabic and Portuguese, which has been pretty consistent. And again, that tiered focus monitoring, that fun audit, this one happens every six years. Again, they're looking at everything from programming to supports to staffing, identification, parent involvement, notification letters, and also student records, so same process, self-assessment, interviewing, reviewing files, and reaching out to families as well. We are in full compliance in that area, too. Again, a big accomplishment, a lot of hard work, it's a small but mighty department with the four teachers. Another ask, so last year, this was an ask as well, as far as a budget proposal for my department, so looking at an ELE, so an English Language Education Content Coordinator, similar to the content coordinators that we have now overseeing and evaluating, supervising a department. Again, it's a smaller department, so I see us being able to support that within, having one of our full-time teachers, if we posted internally, being able to do .75 of teaching and .25 of administrative duties, to be upfront and honest. One of our teachers does a lot of the coordinating within kind of her scheduling and her free time, per se, now, and I see that being a natural kind of progression, if that was something that we could add. It would become an administrative position, so it would allow us as well, not just to work within the contractual obligations of the school day hours, but working outside and working in the summer to grow kind of our department and the needs of our English language learners. And then the last department is our nurses, so as I mentioned, we have 5.6 nurses, so if you recall, we added a .6 nurse based on kind of the enrollment at the high school and some of the regulations in regards to kind of ratio between nursing staff and students, and some of the increased needs of our medically with our students, especially at the secondary level. We have several diabetic students that require certainly much more support in our nursing kind of department. Right now, we have a one-to-one nurse, so a student who requires a nurse with them full-time as well. So a nurse leader would be an additional admin position to supervise, evaluate, kind of coordinate. Right now, we do have a stipended position with one of our nurses, so she does some of the coordination for substitutes, coordinating with our nurses for department meetings, overseeing some things, but this would be an administrative position to support kind of the growing needs, and again, that collaboration among that department. We do receive what's called an affiliated comprehensive school health grant, so we had applied in 2019, and it's a 10-year grant. Each year, the funding is not guaranteed at $40,000, but we've been stable at about 40 for the last couple of years. Certainly, we are allowed to use that money for the first three years of the grant, if I'm correct, so school years. So one more fiscal year, we would be able to allot some of that money towards the nurse leader. We do use that money for other things, so that is something that would be a budget implication if we didn't have that money. So it does help us pay for substitute nurses, our needs of our buildings as far as machinery, materials, things, for instance, a hearing and vision machine went at one year, so that that grant was able to cover some of that. So again, so that would be a budget implication, even if we were to get that grant for that $40,000. But I would be remiss to not support, you know, the nurses and the need in that department as well. And that, budget summary.
The end summary. See, you did it with smaller font, that's wiser than.
Right, and I have some possible grant funding.
If I can't see it, then.
I think your number's like six, so not, no, not quite half, but about $400,000 if we added in all the positions that I would be recommending. Again, as Erin said, certainly understand and recognize, this is one department and in a vacuum, but I certainly want to advocate for, in a perfect world, what I think each of the departments under Student Services, you know, deserve. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
All right, with that, Suzy, you want to start down?
Just, you know, really, it's very thorough. I'm just, I was confused on the $40,000 you were able to allocate. I guess I'm thinking about how we had, like, we've been able to take money and put it into something to kind of see for the future. We're at the four-year mark where we can't do that anymore for the nurses.
For this particular grant, it would only be for FY24 that a nurse leader, I think some of the design of the way they're allocating kind of the funds and the way the grant is written allows for the first few years to be a nurse leader position to grow kind of that department needs, but.
But the last six or so have to be used just for the purpose?
The remainder of the grant, so the remainder of the years, would have to be used on other things, so there's an outline of what we can use for funding on the grant internally. So for next year, $40,000. But again, that $40,000 is, has been spent in the last couple of years on other things, so we would have to think about how we would support what we've been spending.
So, and was that number worked into this final tally of kind of figuring out?
So the total of all of those without any grant funding is $400,750. If we got a grant, it could be $40,000, but again, that would really grant funding, right? It's just a transfer of expense there.
Okay, gotcha. And I'm sorry, I see where you.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
For me, Suzy, the light thing.
I know, I know. Just a quick question about the registered behavior technician. You're saying that the one we currently have, that's 30 hours a week, we already have one, but it's going to be cut?
Yeah, so we're using ESER fund, ESER funding.
So are you using that too?
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to.
So we would not be able to support that model going forward.
Right, as we get closer towards the end of our budget cycle, there may be some dollars left in ESER 2 that are unspent that we could put towards it for next year. ESER 3 is really earmarked for the H-based units and for the technology replacements that we're going to have to do. But we, as you know, hired some interrupted learning tutors across all the buildings and the grades, and so some of those people started right away, some had a delayed start, so there could be some breakage there that we could put towards some of that, but we won't know until we get a little bit further into the spring.
This is, just for my information, do you have any kind of, that grant you're applying for, $125,000, do you have any kind of indication of the possibility of success?
No, it's a brand-new grant, so I have no idea. So I have no idea.
Might as well throw a fastball at the hat.
One of our nurses had shared it, as DPH often shares, you know, opportunities, and we've, you know, applied for smaller grants over the years, but it is associated, you know.
Right, and you heard David make the comment when Senator Moran and Representative Lenach were here, and Mary Beth talked about it a little bit in her presentation when we talked about the literacy grant that's out there. There's a pot of money that needs to be spent by a certain date at the state level, too. So as we're talking about our S3 needing to be spent by September first, 2024, they're all, they also have funds that are about to expire. So, you know, it's possible we could be luckier than we've been in the past when it comes to some of the grants that we don't usually get.
Go for it, and, you know, if you, I mean, at worst, they'll give you just a little bit less than what you asked.
The only caution is that those are some more often than not one-time opportunities. So what happens when we bring on a director or coordinator of behavioral health and the grant funding is just for one year?
Right, I mean, that's what we're seeing with the RBT, right? So once we establish that position, we then also establish that we want to continue to fund that. So as soon as those monies dry up, we've gotta figure out a way to maintain that service because we saw value in that. So that's the challenge we have, right? And it's gonna get compounded as we continue moving forward because a lot of those things that we've done have been with that money. That was sort of my point to these two was, how do we continue that? Can you continue to fund us so we can maintain that level that we've hit already?
Yeah, I thought it was a good point.
No, Jess, I've sat through many of these, thank you. It's a lot of information.
A lot of info, it's kinda dry, a lot of data.
No, I'm very.
Blue, blue, a lot of words.
Should've been in red for Valentine's.
Nope.
A lot of slides. Mike is here, and he'd be like, I told you ten slides. But I think about standalone, so this will be on our website for those people who are unable to.
I used to laugh when Mike would sit through the presentation making numbers down, the whole thing. I'm saying, I can't do, he was doing it in his head, and I'm sitting there like, trying to find it calculated with the numbers, and I'd be like, holy heavens. He was quite impressive to deal with. No, I'm totally content with this. And again, I think the questions we threw out earlier to our representatives and our senator, again, there's a ton of cash of their people. It's, you know, between now sports betting and gambling and what was left over and all sorts of stuff, you know. Again, will that continue to flow? But I can tell you from the business side of business, we're seeing walloping growth in business. But I hate to say it, with sports betting, you know, legalized marijuana, stuff like that, so. I think if we keep an eye on these people, they can't put the money into silly projects. Hopefully, it'll come to us, and I'm not saying just us, but it will come into education as a legitimate funding source, so. On that, Mr. Chairman, all yours.
What's that? No, just, I think, reiterating the fact that as our, even with our enrollment dipping a bit, the numbers continue to grow for the needs, right? And so this is a department and an area we continue to know we need to support, not just from the out-of-district students and those with set plans, but just our general population that's gonna be dealing with another level of challenges, and we know we need to continue to support that. So appreciate your presentation tonight, thank you.
There's no questions in the mailbox?
No questions in the mailbox.
Everyone's left.
Yeah, they have.
Don's afraid to leave because it's the last one.
He's like, I'm last one?
You better return with candy for Sharon.
We are almost there.
Do you have one more piece?
Yep, so the second piece of my report is the consideration of approval for an eighth-grade waiver for softball. I'll start with that first. So as you know, we've had some eighth-grade waivers come across before. There is a multi-step approval process before the waiver comes to you all, right? So it's the athletic director, the building principal, myself, and then it comes to you for approval. So sometimes there are waivers that are requested that don't make it to you guys, you know, rightfully so. Softball is one that you all have had for the past several years. So we've had an eighth-grade waiver for softball for the last three years, and that's in order to field the JV team. So in 2022, softball had fifteen players on the varsity team, three of them were seniors. JV had thirteen players, six of them were eighth graders. The participation is expected to be about the same for 2023. So Brian, Mark, myself are requesting a waiver to allow eighth-grade girls to play on JV softball. So just for clarification, anytime you're requesting a waiver for eighth-grade students, you're requesting for them to play on the lowest level of the sport that you offer. So even if there was some kind of phenomenal eighth-grade softball player, they are not able to play varsity. They can only play the lowest level we have, which is JV.
Questions for Erin about softball? I know we have done this in the past. So do we have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Yep.
No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So the second waiver is a new one for us, and so Brian was originally looking for a waiver for both girls lacrosse and boys lacrosse. I will start with girls lacrosse. In 2022, there were forty students on the team, seven of them are seniors. Many of them had to play both JV and varsity in order, you know, with illnesses and injuries in order for them to have enough students on both teams. There was an interest meeting for lacrosse at the high school back in the end of January, and twenty-nine girls were interested. So I think the concern is that twenty-nine is a smaller number than forty, and there were some challenges last year with the forty. So they are requesting a waiver for eighth-grade girls to play JV or lacrosse, I mean, yes, JV or lacrosse. In speaking with the youth sports folks associated with girls lacrosse.
You do know roughly how many eighth graders?
There is not a concern that pulling eighth graders up to play high school lacrosse will affect their program for eighth grade. There's a chunk of girls in that grade level, so they are not worried about that because that's one of the things we look at, too. What does it do to the youth feeder, right? You don't wanna decimate the eighth-grade level. So that is being requested. Brian also was requesting a waiver for boys lacrosse. In 2022, there were thirty-five students on the boys lacrosse team, eleven of them were seniors. They played a modified JV schedule, so there wasn't enough students to play a seventeen game, thirteen league or non-league game schedule. They are concerned that without a waiver, they would be unable to field a JV team. This is the first time also that this waiver is being requested. So Brian moved the waiver to Mark. Mark and I had a conversation about the waiver. Boys lacrosse is a little bit different than girls lacrosse. Boys lacrosse does involve a level of physical contact. In the past, we ha, I have not, and this committee has not granted waivers that would be putting a student of eighth-grade age, which is thirteen or fourteen, up against a high school junior or senior, which is seventeen or eighteen. We've had requests in the past for eighth graders to play freshman football. We've had, there was conversation in the past about boys hockey. I did not move the boys lacrosse waiver forward towards you all because I think the level of physical contact is too much for a thirteen-year-old versus seventeen-year-old. With that being said, it's difficult to make the argument for girls lacrosse because the numbers are the same. So my recommendation to you all is that you hold on the girls lacrosse waiver. You know, I think that we should see who actually comes out for the team. I mean, spring.
Signups are coming up.
Spring signups opened yesterday, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a fairly good idea. The season starts on March twentieth. I would rather come back to you in a week or two or the March seventh meeting or the March fourteenth, probably the fourteenth, and let you know what the numbers look like. I don't think it is fair necessarily to approve the girls waiver and not the boys. But there have been times in the past where we've had, so for swimming, we've approved eighth-grade waiver for boys. For tennis, we've had an eighth-grade waiver for boys and not for girls. So there have been instances where there's just been, where the sport is both, both genders, that we've only done one. But I feel like with this one in particular, the numbers are pretty close.
So just out of curiosity, the forty, I mean, last year was like a COVID year, so if kids were getting sick and having to jump in to help out JV, could that have played into it, or?
So, yes, so with forty, you had a tough time fielding a team, fielding two teams for a full schedule. We're seeing in both instances of girls and boys lacrosse, thirty kids showed up for the interest meeting, so you're ten less, what is it, ten, ten players on the field for lacrosse? In the past, it's been anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-eight students, depending, because we don't wanna cut, you know, just one or two kids if you're talking about a JV level. So that's a tight number. I do think more kids may come out that haven't come out in the past or that weren't, even in the conversation I had with Brian, there were a couple of boys that weren't able to go to the interest meeting but wanna play lacrosse. So, you know, the number could be as high as thirty-two or thirty-three.
So, but you're saying that the level of physical contact is distinctly different between the women's lacrosse.
Absolutely, so just look at what they're wearing. Girls are wearing goggles. And that's it. The boys are wearing a helmet and a chest pad, elbow pads, all kinds of.
So that'll come into play for the consideration as well, despite the number.
So I'm, I'm not moving boys lacrosse forward. What you have in front of you tonight is girls lacrosse, but I could understand why you would maybe want to wait on girls lacrosse because the number of students that are currently interested is about the same as boys lacrosse.
And so how, so we can wait, we don't have to make a decision?
You can wait. So the MIA prefers you to file the waiver request several weeks before the season starts. It doesn't mean you can't file it late, and we have definitely filed them late in the past.
And what's the start date for the season?
March twentieth, you know, barring any weird weather situations that we often would haven't necessarily had yet. March twentieth is the scheduled first day for spring sports.
Is there a big demand from parents that want their eighth-grade kids to play JV sport? Or is that more of like?
No, so it's more of a conversation when you're, when you're talking with our athletic director, trying to conserve the levels that we have right there. Have been news that we've had a freshman lacrosse team. We obviously don't have those numbers anymore, but as a high school, it's pretty typical to be offering a JV and a varsity level of a sport. So, you know, Brian, our athletic director, taught, works closely with our youth program because obviously, there's a dip in the feeder, right? Something happened somewhere in the grades where there's fewer kids playing lacrosse now. What are they playing? Are they playing something different? Generally, the youth lacrosse program in Pembroke has been very strong for many years. So once kids get to the high school, they're either making a choice for something that wasn't offered like track and field, or they're not playing a sport and they're specializing, right? So when you have a youth student, generally, they play fall soccer, winter basketball, spring something. At the high school, kids tend to specialize a little bit more and do, you know, some outside weightlifting or whatever to condition for, for their fall sport of choice or whatnot. So, you know, Brian did talk to the youth program, both boys and girls lacrosse in eighth grade are strong. There's multiple teams for that, that age level. You know, we always want to think about the feeder. As I said, we had the conversation when we talked about girls basketball earlier this winter, allowing eighth graders to play on that team. What does that do for the feeder? There seems to be a disconnect between the lacrosse feeder and the numbers of kids that actually come out in high school for lacrosse. So as Brian tries to work through that, what he's trying to do is conserve at least the two levels of the sport offered at the high school. I'm sure you all hear some news from parents about.
Oh, we do, yes. Well, and like you said, the ultimate goal is to maintain the high school program, and how do we build that system, right? And we seem to do that successfully, and obviously, our eighth grade and ninth grade girls hockey has been really successful, right? Some of our strong talent right now. So it's allowed programs to build, and I think these numbers are at a point where we can sort of evaluate over the next couple of weeks, see how signups go, and then we can bring it before our next meeting as we're meeting very often.
Yes, we sure are.
Great. Unless anyone disagrees with it?
No, I agree.
I've covered it with that.